The order, the only item on the agenda is a discussion on community support grant program. And you know, those of us that have been on council for a while are familiar with how we've been doing these things and it's we we for the for the three that are new, it's been an ongoing, I don't want to say a battle, but it's been an ongoing issue every year. One, at times it has gotten so time demanding that we can spend three and four hours just talking on this one portion of the budget, which is less than one tenth of one percent of our overall budget. So Val has done some some work for us and has been talking with the county and she's outlined a few things. So you know, the first handout we had was what we gave last year. And Val, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna let you have this baby.
All right. Well, as Mayor said, our purpose tonight is to try and reach some consensus on how to administer the community support programs going forward. So we had previously sent you a list of questions that were items for you to consider and we'll go over those tonight. And we have added a couple of other items to it. And then if there's other items that you'd like to add, we can go over those. So hopefully by the end of the evening, we can reach a consensus on a lot of these items. And then over the next several weeks, we'll sort of develop a new policy form and format and a new application that we'll bring back to council to look at and approve based on our conversations this evening. So with that, we'll just kick it off. So the first question was, what type of organizations do we want to fund? Typically, we have funded 501(c)(3), which are not-for-profit organizations for which their contributions to them are tax deductible as charitable contributions. There are a lot of quote unquote 501(c) somethings. Only (c)(3)'s are allowed to be deducted on your tax returns as charitable organization. So hence, we add the (c)(3). We have a couple of what I call quasi-governmental units, which is the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library and the ACE program. The function and their funding is primarily like a government. It's not an independent not-for-profit organization. So we kind of refer to them as quasi-governmentals. And then we have the member organizations, which are included in the budget individually as community developed and not necessarily community support.
Before you go forward, the the library, because I'm not, I'm not sure I understand, what's our requirement to support the library? And is it based on percentage of people? Is there some magic number? Why is it not?
There is no magic number other than the library is funded primarily from state and federal funding with some contributions from the local governments from which it's in the areas that it serves. So the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library gets additional funding from Christiansburg, Floyd, and Montgomery County. I don't think they get anything from Blacksburg because they have their own library over there.
That's part of the system also.
Is it?
Yes.
So.
And I think Blacksburg does fund them.
Do they? Okay. I wasn't sure about that one. So.
Do they ask for an amount or do we just have a predetermined amount?
No, they ask for an amount every year.
They get through the same application process that everybody else does.
Okay.
Okay. So the member organizations that we belong to are the Regional Solid Waste Authority, the Water Authority. Both of those are based on usage and we pay fees based on what the agreed-upon fees are within those organizations. And then and they don't ask for any funding other than we pay our fees. And then the Emergency Communications Authority or 911, that's based on a 25% split from each locality, which is the town, the county, County of Blacksburg, and Virginia Tech. So that's just a flat 25% that's agreed to that we fund primarily through police, fire, and rescue. And then the rest of these are organizations that we do fund and they generally just send a letter saying, your portion share for this year is X, whatever that happens to be. And those are the Regional Airport Authority, Virginia Tech, Montgomery Executive Airport, the NRV Passenger Rail Committee, NRV Passenger Rail Station Authority, the NRV Regional Commission, the NRV Metropolitan Planning Organization, Onward NRV, the Small Business Development Center, and then of course, the Regional Tourism Office. And that's based on the agreement that we have for 0.85% of what we collect of the 1%.
Let me ask you something. What about like the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce? I don't remember. I know it's not under community support, but I know it's on, we pay for it. Under what category is that one under?
I would, I don't believe they're 501(c)(3). They're a fraternal kind of organization. They're a business organization.
It's a membership organization. So they're a C6.
So are they a private, are they a for-profit? Do you know?
Hmm, I don't think they're for-profit, no.
They're not for-profit. They're just not a 501(c)(3).
So, having gone through all that, let's go back to our first question. What types of organizations do we wish to fund?
I don't know that that's, I do like the different classification. And I think I really enjoy the fact that you put this together, this presentation of this, because this really makes it clear for us. I do think that the Montgomery Floyd Regional Library should be like a budget item. And that's personally, in my opinion, in the ACE program, because they are educational and we are part of it with all their government agencies. As far as the the other ones, I do think that we should definitely separate them, because I know they are not separated in our budget funding.
Right. A couple of those organizations that we consider quasi-governmental are fallen under community service. And we do have a specific, or I'm sorry, community support. And we do have a specific question to that effect, I think farther down the list. So anybody?
I think we're funding the right people. I do have a question. Does 501(c)(3) include religious organizations?
Usually, yes.
But we've never, have we ever had any apply or do we, have we excluded?
We've excluded them in the past. So we'll get to that question. But in general terms, 501(c)(3)'s, you're okay with. The quasi-governmentals, you're kind of thinking you'd rather see those as a more as a community development or separate line item, not a part of community support?
I think they should be definitely separated. And that's my opinion. And we still should be able to say, yes. I like what the county does. I like what the the county tells you on the budget items when they have their budget discussions, that they actually have a checkmark in there and it says, are they supposed to pay for it or not supposed to pay for it? What are the things that are actually, they have an option on it? You know, like for example, the, some of those don't require funding and it gives them the option under the, what it gives the Montgomery County Supervisors the ability to see, is that something that we have to pay for or is that something that we we get to make a choice and pay for or not?
Is it mandated versus non-mandated?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so am I, am I not wanting to give money to 501(c)(3)'s? I I agree, the library and the ACE are something separate than a than community support. I mean, I do understand why they're under, because it is providing, they provide support to our community, but I don't see them the same as as a museum or, you know, the aging or whatever stuff. So I see them and personally as something separate. So I I'm not in disagreement of moving, moving the quasi-governmental as a separate line item if it's possible. I don't think it's a sword to die on, but I don't, I personally don't see them as.
I think the biggest benefit, I don't feel super strongly about it. However, if in our discussions, we talk about limiting that pot of money that's going to community support, and these are commitments that we intend to make every year, we're committed to these organizations in a different way than we are for divvying out a pot of money that is finite. So I would be in support of separating those and just committing to, you know, fund them each year.
Well, and I think they can be under the same category of the pot of money. And I agree with you, Tanya. But I also agree that they should be separated under the support, saying, hey, these are, these are supporting organizations that we, the Town of Christiansburg supports. However, they are not under this older category. Because right now, I mean, I don't remember what was the amount of applications we get in, but that number can change. That number can change. And the more nonprofit organizations that we keep getting into town, I mean, just this past year, I know many of them that came to be a part of nonprofit organizations, part of the Town of Christiansburg. And so, and they are taking some of the other buildings that, you know.
So general consensus is 501(c)(3) is is the community support? Is is that correct?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Okay. So within 501(c)(3), you have a bunch of different categories. Again, depending on what their organizational purpose is when they were formed, or depending on the specific grant that they're doing. So they can be health or welfare, meaning that they're doing something to help an individual that benefits their health or their safety in their home, such as utility assistance or food assistance or those kinds of things. You can have cultural or historic preservation, which would be more the Community Center, Christiansburg Institute, potentially the museum are more about cultural and historical preservation. You can have organizations that are educational, religious, recreational, or economic development. Currently, we don't fund any national initiatives. So the Red Cross, March of Dimes, muscular dystrophy, any of those national type initiatives, we've never funded. Scholarships outside of ACE, K through 12, political organizations, labor, or fraternal organizations. So with that in mind, do we need to or do we want to more closely define number two?
You're saying number two is what is included right now or simply what?
Those are just kind of categories. Do we want to say, well, we're only going to fund health and welfare, or we're only going to fund health and welfare, cultural preservation, historic preservation, and educational. We're not going to fund religious, recreational, or economic development under this category.
Have we defined this in the past?
No.
I don't think we've ever, pretty much the list that we have in front of us is about, give or take, one or two about what has come forward every year for the last 20 years that I remember.
Yeah. There's been some newer ones in the last three to five years. The older list was shorter and smaller.
So for example, the Montgomery County Supervisors, they have like everything separated by different categories, like human services agencies, they have different things in there like agency on aging, community health centers, New River Valley Centers. And under those, he talks about they are non-mandated. So you typically wouldn't have to if you didn't want to. As far as like, obviously, they have been funding them, literacy for volunteers, the library of volunteers, New River Valley, senior services, brain, injury services.
So what's the point?
Yeah. I mean, it's the same thing we do. It's all political. It's whatever you want to support. They they do the same thing. It doesn't matter what format it's in. We, they still have an application process. That's just how they put it together. It's it's still up to the individual politician whether they're going to support it or not.
Okay.
Okay. Do we, do we want to place any of these categories or categorical restrictions on funding?
Well, it's a slippery slope, but I think you, you know, you mentioned health and welfare, cultural preservation, historic preservation. That's pretty much the gamut of what we've, what we have funded for the most part.
Yeah.
But the slippery slope is, you know, you get into educational, then, you know, yeah, I guess maybe that is the the scholarships. The scholarships, but that's a given.
Yeah. And the literacy volunteers and the library universe, which, well, I mean, it's, I think it's hard for me to answer this question because I'm just curious, is there's like a purpose statement for the community support grants? Like what, why we've decided to pour this money into the community and like, what do we want to accomplish with that? Because I think if we knew what we want to accomplish, we would be able to, I think it would be a little more clear, the types of organizations we want to support. Have we ever thought about a, like a purpose statement for this funding?
No.
We could come up, probably come up with one based on those.
I would really like to put something in motion as far as like the keeping under an amount that we want to spend in our budget. That could be 1%, 2%, 3%, or whatever the budget is for the town. But I think try to stick to that, because right now, we don't have no rules. There is no nothing right now that can keep organizations, obviously. We can say, yes, we want to fund them. No, we don't have to fund them. But I think it's really important for us to be very financially conservative regarding these items when I know that all these organizations are wonderful and we all want to support them, I think, deep inside of us, you know. But how do we do that in a way that is not going to hurt us financially too? And that we're not going to have to raise taxes.
I think you're putting the cart before the horse. We have to decide what organizations we're willing to fund. And then we can discuss whether we're going to put a cap on those.
That is a question later on down the list.
That's later.
That's later on in the evening. I think right now, we have to decide which ones we're going to allow to apply to fund.
I'm, just based on reading the definitions of the organizations, I, I mean, I know, I think that health and welfare, cultural preservation, historic preservation, educational fit, I think what the purpose is, is to put dollars into the community that are being put back into our citizens, which is hard for me to say, because I think the other three could be as well. But religious, recreational, and economic development don't even really seem to be like something that is asked for very often. But those other categories seem to be organizations that do give back to the community. So, I mean, it's hard for me to draw a line, but I think that initially, that's where I would draw it.
I think historically, sort of the mission was kind of what you stated, where it was to reach out, to provide a benefit to the citizens that were having trouble or in need or that provided an extreme benefit to the community as a whole, such as the literacy program. That's educational, yes. But educating our citizens and helping them to read has great value. And it's hard to put a dollar amount on it.
Right.
You, the the religious and recreational, you're going to start getting into this church wants a donation because they're short of members or whatever. Recreational, you'll get into sponsoring the trout marathon or the 5K marathon. And that was never really the intent behind these. It was more to provide support to those that weren't of an economic status to be able to do that. And we do have like Kiwanis Club, the club supports recreational activities for low-income people who can't afford to compete. Kiwanis Club has a program for that. So part of it has been a little bit of looking at, are there other organizations out there that serve that purpose, that meet that need?
Right.
And that's kind of where we're trying to get with this, is is trying to start to look at who else is meeting that need? Are we just meeting the need that not, it's not being met out there?
I think you say that really well. And that makes a lot of sense to me. And I think that kind of reaffirms the categories that I would personally choose for this. Not that I would say, oh, well, you're related, you know, this is, you're a food bank and you want some donations, so you're putting an application, but you're in a church. And so we can't say yes. I wouldn't say no to that. But if they have a food bank and it's 501(c)(3), then yeah, apply for that. And certainly, that could be something considered. But that's pouring into the community as a whole, not just into one's, you know, that one facility or that one organization.
Yes.
Well, the application's pretty straightforward. The Town of Christiansburg is enabled to consider, but not limited to donations for the following: national initiatives, individuals seeking scholarships, fellowships, or sponsors for a particular cause, individual K through 12 schools, and I I would presume that it, that is included with public and private, political labor or fraternity organizations, organizations other than 501(c) nonprofits, governmental or tribal entities, salaries and wages. That's on the application right now.
Mm-hmm.
That can be our mission statement.
So number three, item number three, except for the ACE, I would presume is, do, I mean, do you want to start doing straw votes so we can narrow this thing down, be in line with it and say?
Well, I think it's pretty much with the outside of ACE. I think we're currently doing that right now by our policy.
I think I've heard, I guess in regards to number two, I think I've heard that you don't necessarily see a need to put specific labels on things. And I guess do in fact, some, some things probably cross those boundaries of maybe two or three of those categories potentially.
And and sometimes they do.
Yes. You know, Christiansburg Institute would be a cultural and historic preservation, I would think. So, you know, I think you could say Wonder Universe is educational, but I guess it might be recreational to some degree as well. Literacy volunteers is educational, certainly, but you could even say that's economic development related. So like I say, I think some things certainly cross those boundaries.
I wouldn't want to exclude literacy volunteers if it could, you know, be economic development plus educational. But what, how does it benefit us to, if we go ahead and cut these down or or label this, how does that benefit us in how we're deciding how to divvy out this money? Are we just saying, if you're these, if you're these, and we're just not going to consider the application? Is that really it?
That would be the only purpose in doing it, is to just say, we're only going to fund health and welfare, cultural preservation, historic preservation. That's it.
Yeah.
If your purpose of your organization is anything other than that, we're not funding it. So if it's not a way that you want to break it down, then we won't break it down that way.
Yeah.
And this was just one of those thoughts, that this is a way that you can do it.
Yeah.
Right.
No, I mean, I think it, yeah, I think it's a fair thought, but I don't, I don't know.
Well, and I think that, I think Tim had mentioned earlier, it is a, it's a slippery slope when you get into into religious. I mean, it's like if someone mentioned earlier, if you fund the Methodist, then the Presbyterian's are going to want, and then the Baptist and then the Catholic. And it keeps on going until, you know, it's, it's, it's just, hey, here's an easy way to get us some money. And I really think that if we, if we stay as far away from those recreational and economic development, I think we're much better off.
You talking about adding recreation and economic development to the?
No.
Not adding?
Not adding, no.
Right. But including it in the application that we won't consider religious or recreation?
In other words, add maybe religious to number three to the list?
And if we, as far as the application, once we have all the information, I see all the things that, you know, we need to do to the application.
Yeah, right. And that is part of, you know, having this kind of open discussion was to try and get the feeling for where you guys are so that we can take all of that and put it together and put it in a process. And if there's tweaks, once we come up with that, that you want to adjust, that you're not comfortable with, then we can look at that. But there's a lot of things to think about and talk about here tonight. So if we could just kind of get a good feeling for where you guys are coming from, then hopefully, we can put something together. I think all of you kind of, you know, you don't want to fund the church who's got failing membership and needs a, I can name my church Christ Street. You know, the foundation has an issue and it's a historical building, so we'd like you to give us a grant for $10,000 to fix our foundation. That's a slope you're going to run into. And if you do it for one, you're going to do it for every church in town. And I don't know that that's where you want to go.
So I think the general consensus is move religious to number three and leave the rest as it is.
Okay.
You got to leave, you got to leave, you got to move religious, recreational, and economic development into number three?
I.
I mean.
And that's what I think we should do. But I wouldn't exclude a, an organization just because they crossed and were one category plus those. But if you're strictly asking for these, these types of organizations for these types of purposes, then I would move them to three.
I would imagine that if you qualify for, if you qualify for categories, then that would be qualified.
Right.
Right. So if I was a church, and your example earlier was, if I was a church and I was going to do a food bank, it was to benefit the members of the community.
Yeah.
That would be a whole lot different than me asking for money to fix the foundation of my church building.
Yeah. Yeah. And if you're a 501(c)(3).
Yeah. Well, most churches are 501(c)(3)'s, but.
But I think it's really hard too, when you do, when you start doing that, because what you were saying too, I don't know if I'm not getting what you guys are talking about too. But I know even with our church, like, we go to our members to get these funds. We go out to the community and ask for these funds. We don't expect the town to come up with this money. And if we open a program that is to feed the poor, that's something that's done through our church. And if we don't make enough money for it, maybe we won't serve the thousand people we serve. We'll serve 800 this time because we don't have the funds.
Right.
I think that's exactly what they, they have to do. But I think we start opening that door to allow these religious organizations to do this. We have a lot of churches in this town, a lot of them. Not only the problem is that I don't want to support churches, I love churches. The one thing that you may have an issue with too is, what happens if a church doesn't want to marry, you know, gays and lesbians or whatever it is? Maybe the religious activities is not with the rest of the community or what we agree as a town council member.
So you want religious in or out?
I want them out.
Okay.
They're out.
They're out. They're out anyway.
But as a side note, any organization, including a church, can come before council in public session and request forms.
Absolutely.
Now, can you give me an example how that would look like as far as that? Because I just gave you an example of what the churches.
A food bank under health and welfare. I guess was the example Val gave. And I think that would, that would be a qualifying purpose.
And just because they qualify doesn't mean we have to approve them. We may, we, this may become a competitive process. The more we define it and the more people understand how they fit into those parameters, the more competitive it could be. And then we'll have to make those decisions.
From what I understand, in what I've learned about the Agape Center that bought the old school in Cambria, all of the churches in the area have basically banded together and that's, you know, that's going to be the food bank for, that all the churches are going to support. So that might take a little pressure off of, from food bank operation.
But I think it's great that, you know, that's how it was intended to be in the past. I grew up in an environment that the government didn't take care of its citizens. It was the church that took care of their citizens. And I think, you know, the more we give our money from the, from the government agency, being one right now, the more people are going to expect money from us. And I think that that's the reason why I really want to cap this and everything else, because the reality is, we shouldn't be taking care of this. The homeless population 100% should be the churches, it should be the community itself if they want to fund it.
Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on.
All right.
Turn the page, Val. Come on.
So is there a limitation on the types of expenditures? Henry read a minute ago on our current application. It says, we do not fund salaries and wages. Part of the history for that was that we didn't want to get into funding a position and Part of the history for that was that we didn't want to get into funding a position, and then if the grant didn't get funded the following year, then that person would be unemployed. So we kind of didn't want to go down that road, but it's open for discussion.
When I was in the military, my commander would go, I want to implement this policy, and I'd go like, how do you enforce it? Right? So, so the truth of the matter is, you can, you can put this in there all you want, but, but, you know, as our treasurer, you know, you can move, you can move pots of money around. There's no way for us to police this. There's no way for us to know what the people really do with the money you give them, because they'll move it from one pot to another. And, and so, you know, if they come to you with a legitimate reason, my vote's going to be no anyway. I'm just saying that, that when.
I agree, but it's a trust issue, that's all it is.
We have.
Yeah, you just have to trust, if you're giving them the money, they're going to do it, but to put limitations, they're just going to move from one pot to the other and pay the bill. So, so, so creating rules and policies that you can't enforce just cause people to lie to you.
But I think I'd rather have those than not have them, because we have had.
You can put them in there, they're still going to lie to you. I mean, I'm just, I'm just telling you that.
But it's better for them to, because if you catch them in the lie, maybe the chances are they won't apply then it's done, you know? And so I think even if we have receipts showing where they spend the money, I think, I want receipts, you know, I work with people, I have a lot of money.
I don't agree. If you give them the money, if you give them the money, making them submit receipts and all this stuff, if you trust them enough to give them the money, then you trust them enough to give them the money. Period, and what they spend it on is, is, is up to them.
Well, you know, I agree with that, but it's just, I know a few years back, we did the opposite. The organization had to bring receipts, and, you know, so it's kind of like we're picking and choosing who has to do what, it's not the same.
If it's capital expenditures, and I know the organization, they were doing some refurbishing, and the same, I believe with, I want to say with Christiansburg Institute.
We, we did that with Hill School and with Christiansburg Institute.
So they have to, in order to get the money, they have to show they have done the work and paid the bill.
Was that as part of community support grant, or was that a separate?
It was part of community support grant, but it was they requested.
Specifically for construction.
Specifically money to improve their facility.
Yeah.
And then you have to do that.
I.
I think, as a taxpayer, I want to see that. I want to see accountability. I want to see, you know, even with the, with the money that they gave for salary, for the, what is it called? The matching grant money as far as, what is it that we have on the application? There is something in there.
They have to have cash match for volunteer hours.
I kind of agree with some of the emails that we got from Mr. Walz today, as far as like, you know, it should be minimum wage, like everybody else, or at least the amount of money the citizens make.
Well.
I agree with you, Tim, you can't prove it, but it gives me a warm fuzzy when I go through and I have to vote on it.
You don't vote on it, so.
I'm voting on it, no.
Well, yes, he is going to vote. He's going to vote no across the board.
So we, so we have or have not required receipts in the past?
So we have not required receipts.
Not required receipts.
Some people send in receipts, we require them to send in a expenditure report and proof of cash, cash match, and that's it.
So for me, this, the answer to this kind of still goes back to the purpose of the grant, because if the purpose of the grant is to pour back into the community, and, and the money, you know, when they, when they write their application out, and they say, we want to use this money because we're going to buy food, and we're going to divvy that out and, and share with the community. I mean, I still think that salaries and wages, I'm not advocating for them, but I see how salaries and wages, if they were to just put it into their pot of money, and some got spent on that, all that still goes into going out, if you're the person who drives the bus around and, and takes, delivers the things to the people, that to me is still part of the purpose of helping our community. So I don't feel super strongly about excluding the type of expenditure. I'd like to see them tell us what they want to spend it on, and I would like to see that that goes back to the purpose of our funding and our mission. I don't really want to police the receipts of everything, because just like Tim said, if you, I mean, I want to give them the money and trust they're going to pour back into our community, how, you know, however they've said that they're asking for, you know, to do. But if it goes towards food, they're going to take some money, they budget it for food, and put it to salaries. Like, it's all just, it goes into the, to a pot, and then it's all just shuffled, and I don't see how we can police that.
But I do think that it makes them more accountable for what they're doing. I think we shouldn't be the ones that are continuing to make sure that those agencies are running, but just to make sure that they are, they are, they are getting a little bit of help to push them through that bump, but it's not enough where they say that we are supporting them a hundred percent. Like, the agency unaging, they really typically don't need the $6,000 that they get from us every year. They still will run without that. But they want to make sure that they do, they do games, they do sponsorships, they go out to the community, they do events, they want to get the community involved, give them money. They don't only count on the money from the towns. The money that we give them is literally enough money for them to pay anything, you know? But as far as like them doing their part, this shows that they are doing their part, and we're doing our part.
I would, I would just ask you not to say that somebody we've supported for years don't really need the money, okay? They're applying because they're saying they need it, so I don't want to, I don't want to start looking at this. But part of the application is, part of the application in saying we, is our view of saying, we don't want this money used for salary and wages. Now, what they do with it, there's no way we can account for it, but we're sort of putting, we don't want this, and I would rather it not be used. That's the organization's job, is to fund their labor force, not, not, not our taxpayers.
And so the application says that, that they go, here's what we plan to do, use them, this is why we want the money, is to do X, right? And so when they apply, they tell us what they want to use the money for, and then it's, it's at our discretion to, to go, oh, no, that's not worthy of our, you know, of, of the things that we have said internally, but to put a limit on it. Again, I just, I, I think if they're going to be honest and say, this is what we're using the money for, this is why we would like the money and the requested amount, then you hold them accountable that they use the money for the requested amount, but.
It's, it's a moral, basically.
Absolutely.
It's a moral trust that you're going to do this. You know, if we have to prove this and see all that, then we probably, Val, you probably had to hire about three more people to be internal auditors, just for this program.
Right.
Yeah, it does get into, the, the more requirements you put on it, the more hours of policing it takes to do all that.
So as far, so the reality is, defining what expenditures that we wish to fund is, is, is kind of mute, because they're going to tell us what, they're going to tell you what they want, what they want, and then we decide collectively, is this something we're willing to fund? And then further down the line, you ask the question, do we make them provide us with the, whatever you said, that, that paper of, you know, here's how we expended your money? And they, they provide that back to you that says, okay, they did actually do what they said they were going to do, is that not?
That's pretty much what we do now, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I also think it, I still think it's important to, I know what you're saying about just, they can tell us what they want to spend it on, but I think if we tell them, here's what we're looking to fund, then it'll keep people from asking for something.
But that's part of your purpose statement too, that you talked about, is here's what, here's what our goal is, and not, not, not writing a, a rulebook a hundred percent. Here's, you know, there's a, because there's a spirit to things, and then there's the letter of the law.
Right, so if we say we.
Because you said it, you said it a minute ago, you know, if, if I'm a, if I'm a, if I'm giving away food, a food donation, part of my expense is putting gas in the car of the person who's driving that thing, so that's a spirit part instead of a hundred percent to the letter.
Yeah.
So, so want, hey, Mike touched on it a little bit. So the whole point of the application, when I first came on council, I call it the cocktail napkin request, where you want me to sign. I want, I represent this club, and I want 5,000. So then all of a sudden, it would show up in our budget, and there was nothing telling us what this was. The organization, like you said, Tim, could come and say, if we request it, they could show up at council. We could take an hour or two going over each one of these requests, if there was enough, but there was really no formal process. And that's why, with Val's help, we pushed towards getting to something like this, to make it a little bit more effort intensive. If an organization really wants taxpayer money, they're going, we're going to lay these certain guidelines, whether or not we can prove it or not, and put them through the effort of getting it. But we do, you know, with the 501(c's) and what we will fund and what we won't, that was the whole point, because when I got on here, like you said, anybody could show up and say, why don't we use it for this, and this, and this? And we can all feel great about it, and then we all vote on it, but it's sort of, it takes two hours, or we can do a work session every year in February and say, you need to be here, right? But this kind of condenses all these organizations who want money to funnel through this application process, and then come to us for a majority vote. What's bogged us down every year since then is all political, is, it's, it's consensus, you saw the, the, the spreadsheet Val gave, we all voted on it. What bogs us down is certain members are like, well, I don't think they're worthy, and then there's a big debate that sparks. It's already settled on the spreadsheet.
Yep.
Majority rules on the spreadsheet. That was the whole point of the spreadsheet, is to not go in to spending an hour or two discussing. There's already a majority vote on it, straw vote usually, but what happens is, all of a sudden, we get into the budget, and one person's like, well, I don't think they deserve it, and I'm going to bully all you guys into agreeing with me, even though we're not going to do it, because we're all individuals up here, right? So this, everything works on this, except for if we want to cut our funding down to a certain amount every year. I think the application works. It is time consuming for staff, but it's what, I, I think it works. I'd rather not start to have organizations, which any organization can show up and say they want money, whether you're religious or not. I'd rather not throw everything out and then spend two hours in March, listening to organization after organization come in, and then, you know, the only way to do it is we vote each time. Yeah, we'll fund you, no, we won't, we'll cross examine you, and they're, like you said, they're, how are we going to prove whether they're going to spend the money on, on, on what they say they're going to? So I guess I want to know, do we want to keep the application process?
Yes.
Sitting in there as a majority?
I think, I think personally, if you don't have that, there is no accountability. And what makes anybody not apply for this? I mean, I can go and open a 501(c)(3) as organization all the time, you know, and just apply for this. I think you have to stream it down.
So we want to keep the application. The next thing is, and, and we'll get, you know, we can get bogged down with who we're going to fund, because it's pretty much set forward, and we've agreed to put other organizations in there, right? That we won't fund, correct? What we ran into problems in the past is not adhering to our deadline dates, right?
Let's, let's throw down the discussion.
It's coming.
So I guess I'm not going to keep going ahead, so go ahead, Val.
We'll get there.
Yeah, I just, I just.
So, I, I heard both sides of this argument about keeping that statement the same, that in the application now with not funding salaries and wages? Or do we just want to say, tell us what you're going to spend it on, and we can say yes or no?
Is it in the application right now?
In the application right now, it says we do not fund salaries and wages.
Well, to me, leave it there.
I would say yes, keep it there.
Okay.
Let's leave it there if they can't make them, but at least it's there.
If they write down their application.
So, right now, we're funding basically anything other than, pretty much anything, any other than salaries and wages, rent, utilities, supplies.
And remember, if you always hear a rumor that they're actually paying their salary and wages out, you cannot support them the next year. That's your right as a councilperson.
Right.
Okay. And I think these two, these two questions kind of go hand in hand, but they're from a little different perspective. One is, do you want to put a cap on overall support? So a percentage of the budget, or a fixed amount, such as, okay, we have had, we've funded in the last four years anywhere from 240,000 to 210,000. So, one year it was 190,000. So do you want an overall cap? That's part one, part two. Yeah, okay, so, we're going to say it's $250,000, or it's $200,000, whatever, that's it. Total cap on all community support programs.
I forgot, I didn't do A's.
The other approach is that plus capping each individual's support request to a given dollar amount, be it 5,000, 10,000, whatever.
I think we should do both, just to, just to be fair. I think if you, because if you put a cap as the normal amount of expenditures that you spend for the town, you may have somebody that asks, you know, for 30,000, 20,000 dollars, when the cap should be for everybody, 10,000, or whatever amount it is. I think it will give more flexibility to older groups and organizations that maybe, may want to come to the town and get funding as well.
Well, A's, you'd have to put your cap, because you can't say, well, we'll give A's 50 grand, but you know what? We're only going to give you 2 grand, even though you want 50 grand.
But I thought we were going to separate A's and the priority from this.
Are we separating them? Okay, so I prefer not a lump sum cap, I prefer a cap per organization, all straight through there. Because if you say 250,000, we'll all figure out a way to spend 250,000.
Oh, I'm sure.
So for me personally, I, to, because I think our goal is to decrease our grant funding, but also be fair to each organization.
Do, what hap, well, if without a total cap, do you think then that just everyone will come in and just ask for the full amount that they can ask? Like, if we say cap is 10,000 per organization, do you think we'll just get a lot more, asking for 10,000?
I don't think so, I don't think so.
They're doing it anyway.
Like, it's not something.
Because we don't have a cap now, why would you not ask for as much as you could get right now?
No, I, I'm not saying I don't agree with a, with an individual cap, but also for an overall cap. If you say, you know, here's our overall cap, but then you have way more agencies applying for $10,000 each, then where do we stop? Where do we cut that off? I guess I'm saying, we might want to think about a total cap, because otherwise, where do we kind of draw the line?
I think personally, to Tanya with what you're saying, I think I look at things to like, if they asked for $5,000 last year, then all of a sudden, they're asking me for 10,000, I'm like, I'm going to be wondering what in the world you're going to be doing this year, and I will not fund you. You know, and so it's a personal decision too, because one of those applications, and the reason why there is an application system, is because they want to tell you what they are doing with that money. And if I know that you're spending it in other things that you're not supposed to, whatever, then that would keep me away probably from voting for, for you, even though I want all these organizations to be funded. But I also want to be fair to everybody.
Yeah.
So you put a total sum cap on it, let's say one year we have more than 20 organizations apply that qualify for our grants, and they're each asking for 10,000. We'll, we'll, our, our, we'll go up to 10,000, they each ask for 10,000. They all met our guideline of applying before the deadline date, but now you have 250,000, and we've made this condition that we will only fund 200. Who are you going to cut out?
Well, I actually have a, I actually have a thought on that.
And that's what we've run into, is personal counsel saying, well, I'll give this Boys and Girls Club 2 grand, but I'm not going to give them 10 grand. And we ran into that. All this has been, ran into in councils past, okay? And it got to a point where we will fund what they apply, they know better. But my, my thing with having a sum cap on it, is if you, if you're saying, we'll only give 10,000, and let's just say, one year we have 25 organizations who qualify for our grants, want 10 grand each, and we, tonight, put a cap on it, it's 200 grand, how much time are you, again, the whole point of this is to not spend hours upon hours upon hours just drilling in on this. Who are you going to send Val back, because I know none of us are going to do it, and say, hey, why don't you take 5 grand? And then they go, well, why are you giving this other organization 10 grand, and you're cutting me down to 5 grand?
So it sounds like, it sounds like you're saying that a cap for each individual organization, but whatever amount we get to for that year, fund them all if they meet it, and whatever that number is, is what that number is.
That's up to the individual.
I think to solve that problem, so Walter, what you put to is, if you have $200,000, and you have 25 organizations that are funding for this, then we can have in the application saying, hey, we have too many applications, we have to, you know, maybe it's a 10% cap all through, for every organization. You're going to say, hey, just to be fair to everybody, if everybody's following the same criteria, and everybody follows everything that they were supposed to, we're going to say, well, you know, maybe there's something we put on the application saying, hey, we are only going to give up to this amount, and we're going to divide those organizations so you can get, you know, maybe it's not 10,000. maybe it's not ten thousand, maybe it's eight thousand this year, because too many applications were turning.
Done.
I have any, I have a, just an idea I want to throw out that might help us when it comes to deciding and I don't, I don't think it will make the process much longer. But if we understand what the purpose is for our funding and we have some, I don't want to say metrics, but metrics is kind of what I mean, something to score it against. I would like to see our applications be more than just yes, no. That's just based on my feeling and what I know about them and that could be different for each one of us. But if we, if, if there is like a list of criteria that we are measuring our applications to, are you based in our community? Like, you know, we may have, like the YMCA group isn't necessarily based here, but they do work here. I'm not trying to pick that, pick on them, but you know, are you based in the community? What, like how much are you putting into the community each year? Like what's the benefit or the impact in the community? Those are not good metrics, those are not thoughtful. But what I'm saying is if you have a couple of each application, we're just asking these basic questions. Are you here? Are you giving back? You know, what do you do? What kind of work is in the community? What groups are you supporting? Whatever that might be.
It's simple, so how many of our town residents did you serve?
Yeah, looking for the, well, and I'm not just, right, but if we take that information and we can give some kind of a score of like one to five and we just do a quick like, yep, they're based here. Yep, I, I care about their mission statement, you know, that kind of thing. And then we end up with just a basic score. Then it doesn't come down to just basic yes, no. It comes down to some organizations are going to score really, really high and we may want to fund them fully. Some are going to score really low, but still have really good missions and we want to fund them, but maybe we can't fund their full request. I'm not saying that's the answer, but it helps us determine which ones our priorities are.
Who's going to do the scoring process?
Well, that would be each of us looking at the application doing scores, which I understand takes time.
Which bogs us down every year is one person feels this organization is more worthy than the other one. And that's what we, it's not about the application or the, or when we do that straw vote on the spreadsheet. It's when we get into the budget session that it turns into this organization's worthy and you're saying it's unworthy, Tanya. And I want to know why. And it turns huge political, we spend a ton of time on it, the straw votes thrown out the window. And, you know, and I almost agree, you know, a lot of times when you sit through it or when even tonight when we're talking about it, 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 it turns into a huge political. And that's why I see where Tim's, it, it's easy for Tim, I'm just not going to do it, you know? And, and you can almost see that point of view at this time, you know, whereas let's make them come in. Let's make them come in, come before council and request the money and then we can all make that decision right then and there.
There's nothing, I guess, to prevent you individually from kind of coming up with your own criteria and spreadsheet to that degree for, for the straw poll. If you wanted to do that. But it just, I think it would be difficult to come up with something, to agree with criteria wise and have it so e- each of you would necessarily agree that, that as far as the scoring system. I know, I know Val and I wouldn't want to try to put numbers on, on worthiness of applications. But I think it, it, it really is up to you each individually is to decide the worthiness. If you want to use criteria yourselves as far as whether you're in town or how many citizens in town you serve, you can certainly do that. But I think, I guess I'm kind of hearing from what Henry is, that just kind of makes it that much more complicated when you add kind of another scoring criteria to the scoring criteria.
No, I understand.
And then I was like, well, Val, why do you like the Boy Scouts of America? What do you have against them?
Well, if she votes no, isn't that the same question?
Well, if she gives them a three out of five and I consider them a five out of five, I'm going to ask Val what's her opinion.
There you go. It's so subjective.
So you guys, I might ask you guys.
I mean concrete things. Being based in Christiansburg is a concrete factor, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying things about them. I, I'm also not saying it's the best solution, but when we say no, we're saying the same thing as we would a low score, but it's just based on only our feeling or maybe some things we've looked up, but it's hard to tell.
I think I, I, you know, I take, I do my homework and I actually look at the applications and stuff. Like to me, it's really, really cool to see the applications. Like I enjoy what, reading them because I don't disagree with anyone in here as far as like those organizations that have applied with us, that they're doing anything wrong as far as like not doing what they are supposed to be doing. I think they are all doing something for everyone in here in this room. And I think they are important to our community. You know, I'm not saying that I don't support any of these organizations. I think I support them a hundred percent, you know? As far as like if I want to give them more support, I actually go and write them a check, you know? But I think this is, this is taxpayers' money. When, when I look at things like this, I'm looking at the criteria of what does the application look like? You know, how many, like what you're saying is exactly what I go through. Like how many citizens are they helping, you know? How much money did they have this year? I mean, I have seen some organizations that have millions of dollars in their bank accounts.
So do you support a, a overall cap and an individual cap or not?
I do.
So what number?
I would like a ten thousand dollar cap for all organizations excluding Ace and the library. And I would like to have a cap for all of them of two hundred thousand or something similar to it. Because I think that, you know, our budget keeps going up and up and up. And I don't think the taxpayers, I don't want to go to the taxpayers and tell them, hey, you need to pay more money.
So it up to ten thousand?
Yep.
And, but nothing over ten K?
Exactly.
And then, and then once we reach two hundred K, you're cut off.
Yep.
Okay.
Cut off in the sense of you're not going to fund that organization or we're going to prorate everybody evenly?
Most likely prorate them if they follow everything that we're asking for.
It's not going to be a most likely, we're going to, it's a decision at some point and not tonight that we will make, but we're not going to make that decision tonight.
But you're stepping out of organizations that don't apply for ten grand.
I know.
No, and you don't have to apply for that and that is the thing.
Once you go, once you hit that cap, who are you going to reduce?
No, because you're still going to have organizations like the Boy Scouts and everybody else that, you know, some of these organizations that are not going to want to ask for ten dollars, ten dollars.
Right, but.
Because you know that you're not going to give it to them.
You hit that two hundred thousand marks, somebody has to take a reduction if you go over two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so while you know my, sorry, Mayor.
You go ahead.
So while you, while you, you know, my vote already, I, I think, I, I still think that, that, that an individual cap is a, is a great idea because y'all are going to give the money away anyhow. And, but, but that I, and I'm with Henry on this, that having an overall cap, you know, is, is futile and a lot of effort on, that's going to be on you, you all to figure out who gets cut, you know, to, to eight grand instead of ten grand and it become, it goes back to being political again. But, but as far as having a, an individual cap on the max being five grand or whatever number we come up with collectively as a group. But I, I think the overall cap is, is a, is an act of futility for, for our, our town staff.
There was a way to look up how many nonprofit organizations we had in the town. I think it was like over two hundred, I think. What happens if you have a whole bunch of, right now we have like twenty organizations asking for money.
That's right.
What happens if you get half of a million dollars out of your budget and all of a sudden Valerie gets all these applications?
You, 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 you approve the community support grants, so if there's that many organizations that apply, you got decisions to make because mine's easy.
Well, if we don't have a way to prioritize which ones make the, you know, most impact in the town, then the only priority with a cap is who got there first, unless you're willing to decrease people, which I would not want to do, so.
Well, based on last year's budget figure, which I think is two hundred and eight thousand, and we're going to move the library out of this, so it's already down to one ninety-three, so.
We're going to move Ace too, that was fifty.
Ace wasn't figured in this one, was it?
Yes.
Fifty grand.
Right there.
I'm fine without, I'm, I'm, I'm fine without the cap. I just get a little nervous not knowing what that number could be when those applications start rolling in and we just keep a instep approve. I would love to support them all. Get a little nervous about what that number could be though. That's all.
I don't want to raise taxes on people and so I always have wanting to have a cap and knowing that we are making the best decisions for the citizens.
I don't think any decision we would make on funding community supports would ever be an influencer for us to have to raise taxes. I mean, that's, that's, that's really just a null statement.
And to be fair, if there are places in the budget I want to skimp, supporting the community isn't necessarily my top priority. I mean, I would like to see us, if we're going to put money into things, put money into things to help our citizens.
And I think for the most part, when you look at most of these and having sat on this thing for years with Henry and Sam, I mean, there, there, there are about five or six or seven on here that are almost no brainers as to, as to what they do and who they provide for. And that's, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to identify them, but when you know the work that they do and the, and the people that they serve, they're pretty sound organizations. Okay, what do you got, Val?
Okay, I'm hearing a ten thousand dollar cap per, but no overall cap?
Maximum, maximum ten. Maximum ten.
But no overall cap?
To what?
But no overall cap?
No, that's what I'm.
Is that what I'm hearing? I'm not sure.
That's what I think I heard.
I think we should operate with that. We can always, if it gets to be a lot, we can always talk about it next year.
We can always go back to the way we've always done it.
And just related to number six, one thing I've had suggested is the possibility of a yearly cap as far as number of years of applying.
Like a sundown.
Yes.
A sundown to it. With that, whereas if we fund them for a number of years that they have to skip a couple of years.
I think if, if we reach that decision, then we need to start that this year and not look back over twenty years.
Yes, yes.
They got to have advance notice.
Of course. What you run into is, and that keeps a organization, the key is what you want, these nonprofit or these five oh one Cs is to be producing money on their own, through their own volunteers. The minute they start relying on taxpayer money in political favor, that's where they come back to the till every year. I'm, I'm going to get this twenty, thirty grand or I'm going to get this. And that's how they, instead of going out and being more hungry for the money, we've just made, made a, you know, an organization reliant on taxpayer funding. And then when that goes away one day, one, one day, when you get six Tim Wilsons in here and it's gone. But I agree with that. I would like to see a, a clause where if you get it for three years, you have to take two years off.
I like that, so Walter, and I like it a lot because, you know what, there has been a lot of times even when I'm helping my church and everything and other churches around that I'm doing this stuff that I don't want to do, that I'm like, this would be so much easier, we can just, all these organizations has money from the town of Christiansburg.
All right, so we're.
Do we want to do that?
So do we want to say number of years to fund, five, three?
I would say three.
I would say three and two.
Three years old, two years old.
Well, three out of five, what if they only apply every other year? I mean, are you?
No, everybody has to apply every year.
But if they know that there's a cap, if they know that there's a cap and they want to be strategic about their initiatives, three out of five.
Three out of five years.
Three times funded out of five years.
Yes.
I like that.
And a rolling five-year period?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, um, golly, it just slipped my mind. This is, this is above that, but.
She's on a roll.
Now, are you coming up with if they applied, other, other government, that's an actual?
Coming up.
Oh, must have sold there, subliminally, I knew.
Figured the number already, right? Okay, could support per fiscal year be limited to only one source from the town? For example, only one grant per year from any source from the town such as event support? Um, aside grants, community support grants? I can't think of other funding that we do.
The COVID, the CARES Act grants that we did, a lot of nonprofits receive those.
We do, we do ask if they're receiving additional funds in the, in the application.
Not specifically, no, but I do think that's something we'd like to add.
I think that's what we had talked about, adding to their application.
I don't have a problem.
We should put that in the application.
I think that should be added to the application because that could.
Yep.
As, as far as you talk about event support and, and I know there are two or three that would get, you know, you're talking about for.
The public works, please support that kind of stuff for the special.
But you know, the purpose of those grants is to get, is, is hopefully support them so that their, whatever event they're having will raise money to help them with their operations for the next year. So, I mean, it's not like, I know we're writing an overtime check, but it's not like we're writing a, a separate check to X, Y, Z for ten thousand dollars.
And I, and, and so I think an event, the event support piece personally is different than.
Absolutely.
The community support grant.
Hope and cold hard cash.
Yeah, so, so I, just personally, I, I, I was convinced by my peer to support event.
Didn't take much.
And raising the event.
The event, yeah, to support the event part of it, but I, and I, I think the, the Heritage Day Festival is completely opposite from your day-to-day operation and community support. That's my personal opinion.
But I would like it on the application though, like I think that should be.
That they're asking for an event, money as well?
Yeah.
We don't know that till we vet it.
That wouldn't keep me away from giving the money actually. Personally, it wouldn't.
I don't have a problem with that, I agree with him if, because they may do an event one year, they may not. They may be canceled at the last minute and we don't have to put really much into it, so, and that's happened in the past.
But we, we.
You had previously voted though to exclude, no, can't have a facade grant and.
Correct.
Correct.
But that one should stay there though.
I would agree with that one, yes.
But is there overtime that one organization can apply for both?
Uh, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be applying for that, but they have.
Yeah, but then the new rule y'all wrote, eliminate five oh one C threes.
Yeah, but it's still applying because next year we should be.
No, facade grant, did y'all write the, then if I remember what y'all showed us, you eliminated five oh one C threes from being able to apply for facade grants, correct?
Yes.
Which means that they don't even qualify now for community, it, five oh one C threes qualify for community support, they don't qualify for facade.
Right.
So there's, there's no cross leveling, there should be no cross leveling of those two.
Right, if that's how it stays.
Yeah.
The only thing about then, just, I know we're not talking about the facade grant, but this is just one place where these two intersect where if the purpose of the facade grant is because we are investing money into how our town looks, is that helping, is that helping the business or the organization that's trying to serve our community? So if five oh one C three gets, is, becomes eligible for the facade grant, I still see those as different things. Because if we give them money to help renovate the outside of their building and they're matching that, to me, that's different than giving them money for a community service.
We're not going to give a community grant to match the facade grant, basically.
No, no.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's the, well.
They're just two different, two different purposes. The community support is about giving you money to help our citizens. The facade is about, let's share the cost of renovating our town.
It's town beautification.
Right.
Yeah, but that was for businesses and then there is also historical things that you can apply for if you're a nonprofit.
Yeah, and this application can include capital costs, right? Yeah. This commu, what we're talking about right now, they can apply for that without doing this and then going to the facade, but the facade's already taken care of. You guys have already said anybody applies for the support grant can apply for the facade, right? So we're good, we're, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Should we keep it under the application process for this so just in case something changes later on, is not, they are not able to double it?
Well, you, you've eliminated that in your application process.
And nobody can change next year, right?
Yeah, but not unless we change it.
That's exactly, unless we change.
Come before council and.
So, yeah. You clear on that, Val? All right.
Oh, okay. Building modifications, this has been an issue in the past, do, um, does the building need to be owned by the five oh one C three?
I think it should.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I mean, it's not up to us if we go in and modify, but I mean, do we just have a checkbox? I'm sorry, I can't remember on the application where it's like, if you're changing the. I'm sorry, I can't remember on the application where it's like, if you're changing the building, do you own the building? Do we ask them that?
It doesn't preclude the owner of the building who is renting to an organization like that to ask for the grant, is that, is that right?
Well, yeah, he has to be a 501(c)(3) if he's owned.
The owner of the building wants to apply for the building.
Oh, you mean a facade grant?
Yeah.
Oh, no, he can apply. We talked, we had discussed.
If it's a business owner that happens to rent to XYZ charity, then he, he can still, that doesn't mean he's going to apply, but he can still apply on behalf of him as a property owner to improve that facade. Is that correct?
I believe the change was really focused with this.
Exactly.
Okay, so. But it does, I mean, regardless of if he rents to someone else, if he owns the building and wants to improve it, regardless of whether United Way is there or whoever else, he's doing it as the building owner. Is that correct?
No, no.
It has to be the business owner.
He has to be the business owner.
Very good.
So, Val, are you asking this for the facade or for the community grants?
Community support.
Huh?
Community support.
Community support, okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah, do, but do we go behind them and check that if, if there's a, if there's a nonprofit?
I mean, we've only had two instances of asking for this information in the past where there are, we're asking for large sums of money to do building modifications, where we did ask for proof of ownership.
So, if it came up, we would ask?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen a lot, but, okay. So, um, this goes to your question earlier about metrics. Do they continue to need to provide documentation of the number of Christiansburg residents served?
I would like to see that.
This is really difficult for a lot of organizations. They can't really prove it. It's not something I can go in and audit and say, I want to see the records of all the people you serve because it's confidential information.
Yeah, but we're not asking to identify the name and address. We're asking verification that, how many are within the town limits that they're serving?
Providing a number they can probably do for you, they can't necessarily give you.
Names, addresses.
No.
Yeah, we're not asking for that.
But they could come in and say, last year we served 1,500 Christiansburg residents. Like, that's the kind of number I'm looking for, which, I mean, I look at this list, I expect most of these people to probably have.
It's on the application, number of members served.
I would like to keep that.
Number of Christiansburg residents expected to be served.
Okay.
I think that's important.
I think we do have something in the application about being auditable. I'd kind of like to take that out. I think we have to.
Trust them?
Trust them on this one because honestly, I don't have the staff to go out there and audit a not-for-profit who says, I served 1,500 residents and say, okay, I want to see the paperwork that proves you served 1,500 residents.
Don't they have to do that with a file tosses though?
No. Especially a lot of these organizations, they're serving Christiansburg and throughout Montgomery County and sometimes into Blacksburg even, or maybe even into Radford. So, how are they breaking that out? What is their proof, you know?
I mean, they should really do a job inside of the organizations.
We can insist that you must have a method to document how you're serving these residents, but honestly, it's not that auditable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in.
But it's nice to have that information though.
Okay, but we still want the information. We still want them to find a way to document that. Okay. Next one, you want to hit it for me? The match amounts. We currently require, and they can use federal funds, state funds, any other funding that they get from any other government or contributions or anything else to match dollar for dollar for the grant. So, if they ask for $10,000, they have to prove match of $10,000 either with other cash funds from other organizations or grants, or a log of volunteer hours that we've been costing at $20 an hour.
Can we do the minimum wage of $15 per hour just to be fair to everybody?
Well, it's not about, we're not doing salaries.
No, there's a.
Or wages, right? This is where they've gone out and we're just not the only ones. Basically, we're saying we're not the only ones giving them money. That you're out there chasing it, you're working for it.
The current estimate for volunteer.
Can we prove it?
Value is almost $30 an hour.
They submit logs. That they have the volunteers sign in and they submit a log that says, Mary Jo came and worked from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on this date for four hours. And they send me a log and I add it all up, and the only thing I insist on is that it has to happen within the fiscal year that we're giving the funds for.
Sure.
I'd say just keep it.
Okay.
Anything to get them to prove.
I think we answered the next one.
This was the number of years that, did we want to limit the number of years, which we've kind of already addressed on a previous page?
Okay.
Currently, our process is that we put the application out on the website. They're due by February 1 of each grant cycle year, and late arrivals are not considered. Do you want to keep that schedule?
Yes.
Yes.
So, yeah. We brought that back a couple of years back.
I'd also like to add, we don't get the applications.
Okay.
If, if they can't, if they can't get it, and it's not your job to remind these organizations to do it. In my opinion, if they don't have the gumption to make sure that the application is not in by February 1st, it's not your fault, it's not our fault, it's their fault. And I don't even want to know that they've applied after February 1st.
Just send them back?
Yep.
Rejected, not received on time.
Hey, I'll think after this, I'm going to go down to United Society and snap the head off some kittens.
There's a reason for it. There's been accusations thrown around, and there's always somebody, well, we forgot to do it, it's your fault. You know?
And we, we've got that a couple of times.
Yeah.
That's right.
You didn't remind me to send it in there for what was my fault.
An organization from coming to council and doing that.
But.
13 is yes. What is, oh, the disbursement must be submitted to the owner before made.
Yeah, so, you, you have to request your dispersment because you have to do your proof of cash batch and expenditure report before we disperse the funds. We don't just, you got a grant, here's your check. You've got to provide documentation for that. And so, we say you have to submit it by May 15th, which is really kind of pushing your end, but if they don't submit by May 15th, if they request on June 1st, it's too late. Your funding is gone. You had, your deadline was May 15th.
And that is specified on the application?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, it's in writing to them, that's good.
Okay, and the main reason this went into play is because come June 30th, well, first of all, I can't write a bunch of checks on June 30th and say, we're done. But at some point, you're into the next fiscal year and you don't want to be going back and accruing and doing all this rigmarole. Either you get it in by May 15th or it's just not fun. Okay, keeping that.
I think we answered 14, didn't we?
But you know, when, when you put this in there as number 14 too, I, I like to let people know that we are investing this money in those organizations, our community support like ACE and the other ones. Can we really have them in there? Not as the, the chart that we have to, you know what I mean? Like, we still make a decision as far as the yearly thing, but can we just have them under the budget item, under maybe even the same page?
Well, I think we, we, instead of including them in community support, we include them in community development.
Yes. Right, you just move them over, we just move them over with an other list of.
Right.
Of organizations that we support.
And we kind of already answered that, so.
One page over.
We, you know, we got ahead of, ahead of ourselves earlier, so we've already answered that one.
They're good, all right.
This last one, well, it's not actually the last one, but would you, would council like to hear each of these applicants present to the council in a couple of different work sessions, limiting them to five to seven minutes each? There's also the regional commission that does presentations that organizations can come and show up and you can watch the videos of those. Or you just want to adapt the application process and have them, if you're submitting to other organizations, you need to submit a copy of that and you just are reviewing the applications? Or do you really want to see presentations from each of these organizations?
I think presentations are a plus and keep them under three minutes for something like that.
I don't think we can with the questions that would be asked afterwards. They could be three and a half hours.
You can't control any of us.
So, but I think what the, what I would think is, instead of having a work session, is reserve the right to ask if we, if we as a group have XYZ, we're not sure, can you come and tell us about it? Have the right to call one or two or no, and to meet with us at a work session, not within the council meetings, and explain exactly what they're doing.
I really would like to see presentations. Like, even if they're short, I think you give some.
There's no such thing as a short presentation. Not the ones that have come before council asking, I mean, they're 15, 20.
No, the president makes it will be short. It's, it's the inquiry that follows.
Yeah, and that's the thing we keep in control. So, I think, I mean, I don't.
My vote's no.
No for a work session?
Yeah, I'm with Tim on this one for sure.
I want to see, I mean, if they can explain what they want to do really well in an application, I think that would be great. And if they'd like to come before council.
99%, 90% of the people that have applied for these grants in the past have done this in the past. And so, and, and a lot of, most of us, even the newer members on council, have a pretty good work and knowledge as to what these certain specific organizations do.
Yeah, I'm okay without these presentations.
It's taken us an hour and a half to get through 15 questions. There's no way you're going to have 20 organizations come in and it not take us eight hours to listen to everything they've got to say. And so, personally, I, my vote's no. Just no way.
I agree with this.
Consensus, no?
Yeah, I'm consensus.
I think they should have the right to come.
Everybody has a right to come.
I'm just saying, I wouldn't discourage them. I actually like it better when they have a presentation because I feel better about their organization.
Some do, some do ask to come, and I will schedule those for presentations with council. I, I will occasionally ask for kind of presentations as updates too, like with the ACE program. I will occasionally ask them to come to kind of give you an update with statistics.
And so, to clarify, I'm not against hearing from these people. I just am not in favor of us having a work session, making them show up and spend five to seven minutes. But if they wish to come and speak to the council, by all means, I am wide open to an agreement to that. I just don't see us doing a work session requiring each one of them to come in.
Val, I talked about it earlier this afternoon, and it was originally 10 minutes. And we, it was, once we felt to the cost, it was going to take two work sessions with half the applicants this week and half the applicants next week. So, then you're looking at about two and a half hours per work session.
And we're talking about a fraction of our budget, and we got enough things to worry about.
That's the whole gist of it. It's less than 1% of the entire budget.
And, and I agree, Tanya, it's community support, it's where we don't want to skimp on, but I don't, I just personally don't think we need to waste two nights.
No, I, I agree.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Or spend two nights.
But I do like when they come, so if they are wanting to come, please.
We encourage that, yeah.
Yes.
Um, if we're done with this topic, I just want to move back to one thing super briefly. And I know we talked about saying they can only be funded a couple of years out of a certain number of years, but I'm feeling terrible about that because I'm just thinking, just hear me out.
I had a twitch, that's all.
Hear me out.
Trip got whipped.
Okay, hear me out. So, just for, just food for the council's thought, I'm looking at our list and I'm thinking about places like our literacy volunteers or, you know, Good Samaritan Hospice. Like, I'm looking at these organizations who don't need our money as far as money to operate. They can operate without us, but can they do as much as they're doing for our citizens without our support? I mean, where do they cut back when they need to, when they don't get that little bit extra? They cut back then from the town that may not be giving them what it is that they need, and I don't think that that's what they'll want to do. But if, if an organization has to cut back on the meals they deliver because they can purchase less, they can keep operating just fine and they can find other places for funding, but they still have to cut back when we don't give them that support. And so, just food for thought, if they're having to cut back and where they're cutting back is from the Christiansburg citizens who are now not able to benefit from those services, I just want, I just want to put that out there. Is that really something that we would like to do?
I'm, I'm still in favor because I think, again, these organizations should be pursuing funds through their, through their other networks, whether it's raising money on their own because if they, if they get hampered into thinking, I'm going to get five grand every year from Christiansburg, it's guaranteed, it's in the bank, you know, they might not go do, up to the high school and petition to have donations.
Maybe, but if.
I guarantee you they won't. If, if you know you're getting 20,000 from us, I guarantee you, you're, you're going to cut some of your fundraising activities that are out there or not be a zealot, zealous about getting the money. That's just my opinion, Tanya. I know you see, and I understand the way you see it. I understand that completely. But they still need to be hungry and not depend on taxpayer funding to provide these, you know, programs to their organization. They need to continue, all these organizations that I see here should be continually going out, pursuing additional funds outside of the town of Christiansburg.
Well, I mean, I absolutely completely agree, and I think that there are organizations that are on this list who can do what it is that they're doing without, you know, they don't have to cut back a service necessarily from a citizen, but I think there's organizations on here who might have to cut back a service from a citizen. And I'm not saying that they're relying on our money to do things. I'm just saying, they go, well, if you give us $5,000, we can do just that much more work, no matter how much we raise, no matter however we are and how much fundraising we do. If you give us that much more, we can do just that much more. But without it, they can't, no matter how much they raise, they still can't do that much more.
But if you're, if you're depending on the town of Christiansburg to fund your goals for that annual year, there's some issues with your organization right now.
Yeah.
And I, you know, at least a few of these organizations come outside this grant and ask for direct funds to us, which they all can, and we have funded in years past. But, you know, if you're depending on Christiansburg to meet your budget goals and meet your program goals, I think that's something you need to look at with, what are we doing? What do we need to do to get additional money from outside here? Because this is going to end in, in two years from now. After we get this one funding, I want them to stay hungry, to keep pursuing the money because then it's all government funding at that point.
I mean, I don't want it to be all government funding, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm considering that every dollar that we put in goes, if it goes to a citizen for a meal or for literacy training or whatever that might be, it's just that dollar then that can't be spent on that service, is what I'm saying, no matter how much they fundraise.
Then why have a deadline date? You know, because I know several of these organizations didn't meet our deadline date and we didn't fund them. So, where does that leave them? Is that still our responsibility to say?
I don't think so.
Right, but it's, it's sort of the same thing, you know? Then let's not have a deadline date. You can apply all the way up to the time we, we approve the budget as long as council wants to do that, which, you know, again, that's us. Now, we're allowed, we want to give you this money every year and we, we want you to be dependent on us, you know? I, I just would rather, you know, give them a couple of years to rethink how they're going to pursue funding, you know? That's, this is just my personal opinion.
Maybe that means that they will go to the county and ask for more money.
They probably will.
You know, and that's not our problem.
Do you, do you think, I mean, if, if this is going to go into effect, I assume this budget year?
Would be the next grant cycle, which would be for the next fiscal year budget of 2024.
So, are, if, if that being the case, are we cutting the legs out from under some of these organizations that may need an extra year to?
No, we were saying we would start that. We wouldn't be looking back over the last number of years they've been funded to be.
I understand that.
There were only five years we started this year.
It will begin July next year.
And we have, we have, our funds to them have increased every year. And now, we're saying, okay, wonder universe, not this year, but next year, all you're getting is 10 grand. Is there a weaning process that they need to?
No.
You know, maybe you do 15, 15?
No.
Okay. I got you. Just throwing it out.
And then they're at year zero, so they know they've got three years of this. Of course, I would, I would assume by that three-year period, council will be meeting back on the subject in a work session.
All right. Very well. Okay. All right. Any other thoughts or things that you want to add or?
One thing I'll mention, I believe we probably should have actually included the change. One, one thing I'll mention, I believe we probably should have actually included the Chamber of Commerce under member organizations. I, I don't think it was on the list, I think we, uh, when Val and I were putting the list together, we just basically came up with governmental organizations that were members of, but the chamber is, I guess.
But that's more of a dues thing, I mean, I could list the VSCPA and the VML and the, that's, I don't, that's not really a, it's only a member organization in the sense that we pay dues.
Well, but I think.
We don't control, the other ones, we have actual positions and control of the board versus.
Do we still wanna do the spreadsheet every year?
I think so.
And submit it?
Yeah. And we also did the application copies, I mean.
Yeah, uh.
Sure.
Well, Tim, you just. You can take that note off.
Yeah, the, the only. I'm gonna revamp the application so that it looks different and hopefully we'll present the information to you in a little bit more concise manner that might make it easier for you all to look at the applications and review them.
I think that the spreadsheet is, is helpful to see, now, when we ask, when we send this around and we ask your opinion and, and each individual decides on their own yes or no, I mean, that's not a legal vote, that is an opinion, which helps us determine how much we set aside in the budget, so, would they still do that? If they still come to you and say, here's what we have, and you give your opinion, it's only one that, not a daughter.
Or it's a straw vote, man, and you can say, hey, well, it is, we, Val says, you know, uh, the majority wants to fund this, the majority doesn't wanna fund this, right? That's how you typically do it, and what we get bogged down in is somebody gets offended if we're not funding one, and then you're like, why aren't you funding this? To me, it's, hey, it's been decided by council, does anybody wanna change their vote on any of these organizations? And that way, we can move on with the budget, you know, which is, you know, that's where we need to be concentrating the majority of our time, not political pandering for any organization we, we like, just cause the majority said no to it, which is rare.
And the measure.
Or said yes to it.
And the measure of this application and is, to the standard is, does this serve the purpose of this funding or does it not, right? That's the measure, each of us.
Well, each individual can do that themselves, like I said to you, I've done this and it's not that I, I don't believe these organizations are not worth the money.
At some point in time, I think there has to be a, a, a semi-spreadsheet, just so we'll know how much is out there that we're asking to approve, dollar figure.
I think the change is, let's not call it a vote, but maybe call it something else.
Now, you sent, I can't remember when you sent this, the email out to us a week or so ago.
Do you need a copy of it?
Uh, Sam does, or would, I mean, he may not, he may not be able to find his, but I'm just saying. Save Sam a lot of time and effort, he gave his triage tonight after the meeting. Are we good?
We're good.
We're good, we will put something together based on our conversation tonight, bring it back to council for your review in a couple of weeks.
You wanna have another work session on, on the finished product, or do you wanna just, I would, I would think maybe we could meet shortly, rather than lonely in a open town council meeting?
Okay.
I'm good with what it, I think you have enough direction.
How about if we approach it this way, we'll go, I'll, we'll go ahead and write something up as far as kinda the process and the procedures, the way we understand them, and revamp the application, um, and email it out to you, if you all feel like there's enough controversy or things that you wanna discuss, we'll schedule a work session.
Okay, sounds good.
I'm hoping that we got enough information and discussion this evening that we should be clear enough to come up with that.
So, that's for the application that's gonna have to take place in February, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
That's why we're going at it early.
We're adjourned.
We are adjourned.